Do we have any public comment? No, and so there's no response. And so then we are moving on to the first item of our agenda. Oh, no. Approval of minutes from April four.
I will move to approve the minutes and I know that they're good because Jill and I actually had to review them at the recap at the last voting meeting because we neither one of us can remember.
Oh, right. Yes. Okay.
Now we're all good.
Right.
And I will second them.
All right, and now all in favor. Okay, now we have, we're turning this over to Gladera. And she's got some folks who are going to be virtual. Yes.
Yes, I think they're, they're on, um, they are online already. Um, so I'll just do a quick introduction. So the company Knob Scott, they uh basically have a, a platform that manages um organize company turnovers. So they do exit inner and exit um surveys. Um, and then also um through uh uh um, what's the, I'm actually gonna read, let me just read what their, what their website says.
Okay.
So our custom build platform continuously monitors and identify where frustrations are occurring across your organization to predict future turnover. Along with programs proven to retain new hires, high potentials, diverse and other at-risk employees. All of our software is included as needed with our all-inclusive turnover management plan. Um, or there's individual programs to meet your specific needs. So today the demo will demonstrate how we can um use their program to basically see where our, our um our turnovers are happening, why um we can also customize it by whether it's by bargaining unit, by locations, by demographic. Um, so I'm hoping that the demo will be able to show that today.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Beth. Shall we um dive right in? Thank you for that introduction, Gladera.
Yeah, hi Laura. Hi Beth. I didn't see you up there.
Hi Gladera. Pleasure to meet all of you. Yeah, Gladera, what a great introduction. Beth, I'm glad you're here. Um, it's a, it's, it's an honor for us to actually show you this. Gladera, and just so you know, Gladera and I had quite an extensive conversation yesterday. So we have a pretty good sense of uh, you know, what you guys are looking for. So we hope to hit most of the highlights. If we miss something, by all means, let us know. But just a little bit about us, us. Knob Scott's been around since two thousand. So um, and our mainstay is exit interviews. That's what we, that's our forte. That's what we do. That's what we're best at. Um, and we want to help you get some really great feedback from your leaving employees. My name is Laura DeFlorio and I'm the happiness manager here. So I ensure that all of our customers and clients are extremely happy with our products and our services and they help us to make them better and give us ideas and suggestions. And um, I've been with Knob Scott for fifteen years now. And I am pleased to introduce one of the co-founders and our CEO, Beth and Carvin. And Beth, if you want to give a little highlight about you, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Laura. Hi, everyone. I'm Beth. And as Laura mentioned, yes, I'm a co-founder uh and CEO of Knob Scott. And uh my background is, as most of our employees here um is in human resources. And um our idea in starting Knob Scott way back when was really when the internet was starting and we wanted to see how we could make the HR processes a little bit more efficient um using some of the power of the online tools. And uh my interest has always been around employee retention. And so our flagship product that we started with uh has been our exit interview technology of ways that we can automate that process, make it really easy for organizations to be able to drill in and find out the reasons why, the real reasons, not just sort of guessing and creating all these programs without really, without really knowing. Um, so that's what we've created. And since then, it has expanded to, um, as Gladera mentioned, the turnover management, where we're able to uh take that further for organizations that would like to in regard to all-inclusive use of our other tools as well, our new hire surveys, um stay surveys, climates, or other kinds of things, our mentoring program, a whole variety of technologies, all geared around employee retention. Um, in, in your industry, of course, um, teacher retention is always a, a big area of focus in financial services. We work with teller turnover. In hu- in healthcare, we work with nurse turnover. So we really focus on the areas where turnover tends to be the highest and the most difficult and challenging and to really um drill in there and find out why. Every organization is different. The reasons people might be leaving your school system could be very different from why they're leaving a different school system. And then even within your system, perhaps different schools have different challenges. And that's what we hope to, to um help you identify um and then focus in on um suggestions and solutions. Was that too much, Laura?
No, I think that was just great. Um, I didn't know if I was on mute or not. So I think what we'll do today, because I know, I know you guys are, it's, it's an evening meeting and you're probably all want to go home. And I don't blame you. So I think what we'll do is I've asked um Beth to uh share her screen so that we can get right into an actual demo of the web exit system. So you can actually see it. Um, so we'll start with the enable process. Um, and then we'll probably get right into some of the demographics and the reporting and so that you guys can really see how powerful this tool is. So Beth, if you want to share your screen and we can dive right in.
Okay, let me do my best. It's been a bit since we've used Zoom. Um, we used to do Zoom a lot and
All the time.
We switched over to Teams. So give me just a moment and I'll let you know if I need help. Okay. See if this works.
Woo-hoo.
Laura, is that the right screen?
Yes, it is. Good job, Beth.
Okay, right. Um, let me see if I can move these tools out of the way.
Gladera, can you and your team see this okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for checking. Okay, well terrific. So um yeah, what we're gonna look at today is that exit interview tool. We had some great discussions with Gladera on how um right now you're doing things a little bit manually. And perhaps it might be helpful to automate this process, both from an efficiency standpoint and a data standpoint. So let's uh, let's take a look. What we're looking at here is a sample um exit interview account. It's really quite simple. It's designed to be very easy to use for both HR professionals as well as for employees that might be taking the exit interview. And so I'll just give you a little bit of a tour around. And then as Laura said, what we'll do is we'll start with looking at how do you set up the uh employees to take an exit interview? And then we can look at how you track that and we can look at some of the reporting and um answer any questions that you might have. Okay. So to orient you here, you'll see over here on the left toolbar, that is where all of the uh, all of the different tools and reports that you might be using are located here. In the center of the screen, we have some dashboard and basic information. But let's start with, as Laura mentioned, um, how does it actually work? How do you um get your employees when they're leaving set up and how you can make your process a little bit more efficient than it might be on a manual basis? So um here in this section, we call this enabling the exit interview. So I'm gonna click on this enable new survey. And um the process is what we want to do is we want to get the employees set up into the system. We don't want to give them just a blank link because we're quite security conscious here. And we don't want a link that could get out to the public somehow. So on posts it somewhere and then you have you know, a hundred people filling out exit interviews and destroying your data. So um we want to have them set up in the system. So each employee um can just take one exit interview. And so this information needs to go into the system. Now, it can be done through multiple ways. Um, one method is where it could be filled out simply online. Someone could come in, they could create a username, fill out some demographics on the employee and hit the button. More commonly is what we call our um data feed approach. With our data feed approach, we would have this um set up to be integrated with whatever um HRIS or system of record that you utilize there. And what would happen is, is that your system each day would check to see if anybody has terminated since the previous day. And if so, it would send out a file. And on that file, it would, that file would automatically come over to us. And it would have all the information for any employee that has terminated. And um our system each day would go to look and check to see if there's a file there for your organization. And if so, it would automatically enable this. So it would be as if someone has filled out this, but it would all be automated. Um, once it's set up, nobody would need to do anything. Um, and so once, um, so once a day, the anyone that is left would get set up. And what happens once they're set up is that the employee would receive an invitation to take that exit interview. Um, and you'll see here, it could be um that invitation could be sent to their email address. It could be a work email. It could be a home email. It could be both a work and a home email. Um, it could even be a supervisor's email as well, if you wanted the supervisor to receive it and hand it to that person. We also have a newer feature is our mobile version or our mobile um feature such that if you have um phone numbers, uh text phone numbers for employees, that could also be here where the employee would get a um a text message with the link to take their exit interview. And they could take it either by their, come on their computer via their email, or they could complete it on their phone if they have a smart, uh smartphone enabled. It would pull up the browser. They don't, nobody needs to install any apps or anything like that. It would simply pull up their um their browser from any um version of their mobile phone. Okay.
Right. And, and, and just to, to put an, an exclamation point on that, Beth. And then once the, the exiting employee actually completes their exit interview, that information goes immediately into your account. So that it's a, it's on the button record, uh you'll get all the data. It goes in there right away. You'll get a notification letting you know that this has been completed. That can go to anybody or anybody's can go to multiple people. Um, so just to put an exclamation point on that, that's, that's how that works.
Yes. So they would receive their invitation. They would complete their exit interviews, submit that. And then as Laura said, would be notified. You would be notified of that. The other thing you can do here in this um uh configuration area is that you can also keep track of who has completed an exit interview uh and who maybe hasn't completed an exit interview, or maybe they uh decided they didn't want to after looking at it, which can be useful information. So I'll show you this screen real quickly. Um, this uh screen will show you all of the employees that have been set up to take their exit interview. It has their username and their password. And the reason for that is if somebody loses um their email or their text and they call you up and they say, I, you know, I've lost my um link, how can I take this exit interview? You can direct them to our website and they can enter this username. You can give them this username and password and they can go ahead and enter it there. Or you can send, we have a little reminder feature. Let me make this a little bit bigger. Um, a little reminder feature. So this one here is we can send out a reminder to this person that um it will resend the email and this time or the text. And it will say friendly reminder in the, in the subject line and they can go ahead and click on it again. Um, these yes, no's are, are, are interesting and kind of important in a way because it allows you to keep track. So when an employee is first set up, let's see if there are any, there are none here, sorry, in my demo account. Um, when they first set up, it would be a no, no. They didn't start it. They didn't complete it. Um, once they open that up and take a look at it, they would be a yes, no, they started it, but they didn't complete it. And once they've completed it, it will be a yes, yes, they started it and they didn't. Uh, I'm sorry, they started it and they completed it. That's what we're going for. And there's various reports that show you their, your participation rate along with being on the bottom here. It keeps track of your participation. The reason I mentioned these yes, no's and why it's very efficient to have this is that if you do have a lot of yes, no's, we really want to help investigate. That's a, that's a clue that maybe there's something funny with your exit interview. Maybe your questions are too confusing, or maybe there are too many questions, or maybe there are too few questions and they look and they think, oh, they're asking three questions, nobody, they don't even care. Why should I bother? So if you get a lot of yes, no's, you can let us know and we will um help you diagnose exactly um what's happening there. Okay, so um that's how we set up and track. You don't need to really do anything on your side from an efficiency standpoint. Um, it will all be set up if you use our data feed where it, and there's no additional cost for the data feed. We used to actually charge quite a bit, but we um employed some efficiencies on our end. And now we're able to operate at no additional charge. And it would simply mean that the information as people leave would come on over. Um, they would take, uh risk, get their invitation. They would take it and you, you have this tracking page here. So this is sort of the um logistics aspect of it. And we can then go into um looking at some of the reporting. Maybe we can take um if there are any questions in regard to the actual process. So we make sure everybody's clear on that part.
Any questions, guys, on the enable piece?
Does that all make sense?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah. And when Gladera and I talked yesterday, your process is pretty good anyway. I understand you guys normally get, you know, at least you get a two-week notice anyway when somebody leaves. And so yeah, I, I have no doubt that your participation rates will be very, very good.
Yeah, that's great. The sooner we can get them enabled, um, the better in terms of um aiding in your participation. Okay, shall we move on to the fun stuff and take a look at some of the recording?
Let's do it.
Okay, we'll do that. Um, okay. So first what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at some of the, like, uh, some of the individual exit interviews, but I, I will um sort of caution on that because what we're, what you really want to be doing is gathering data and we're looking for trends um to see what's happening throughout the organization and where. But let's go ahead and take a little peek here at how we can look at individual. Now, sometimes people in the survey world that haven't worked in HR, um, they get sort of hung up on the statistical significance and only look at when there's, you know, X number. But in HR, I think we have to have a um we have to have a different way that we look at that, right? Because even if it's just one person, if somebody comes, if somebody, if it's just one person, but they say, um, I'm leaving because the person sitting behind me um said they were going to come in with a gun and shoot people. Um, we need to know that. We don't need statistical significance. With that, we need to know. So um we do everything from an HR perspective, more than just a um, a statistical um look at things. So here we do have where all of your exit interviews that have been set up. Uh, I'm sorry, all the exhibits that have been completed are on this page here. And um I want to show you a little something here that's kind of neat is that you can set up your, you'll see it has all the names here. Is it, so that, that would be similar to if you exit interview people in person or over the phone or whatnot, then um you would know who it was. You might keep it confidential as HR professionals. Um, however, it would be, um, you would know who it was. We also have an option where you could set it up where they're all anonymous, where um all of the name information would remain hidden. We would keep the name information on the off chance that there was something like a violent situation where you did need to call us up and say, hey, I, you know, I need to know who this person is. We would be able to let you know. Uh, but other than that, all identifying information would be hidden. Or you could set up the account like how this demo account is set up, which I think is my favorite option for most cases, which is employee choice. That allows the employee to um complete the exit interview and decide for themselves, do I want to have my name? Or do I want to be anonymous? And it's actually quite interesting. Some of you might find it interesting that um when given the choice, often we think that everyone would want to be anonymous, but it's not really the case. Um, more often than not, it usually runs about sixty, forty, or seventy, thirty that people choose to put their name, um, almost like there's something a little cathartic happening there that um, you know, I'm leaving, uh, this is who I am, this is what I want to tell you. Um, and, and put that there. But again, it's just an option. You know your organization better than we do. And so you would be able to decide which option. We have a variety of different options and configurations along the way. So as part of your setup, we go through all your different options and then we set up the account for you based on your um, your chosen options. Okay, so um here's our completed list. We can also look at any individual exit interview. Again, we want to focus on trends and we're gonna look at some trending reports. But you do have the opportunity to look at each individual exit interview. And so you'll see here, it has all the questions on the left-hand side. How they rated in the center of the screen on the one to five basis. We have a couple of different scale choices for you to choose from. One is always the lowest or the not good side, five is the highest or the best. And for each rated question, we do allow them to put in some text comments. We're big believers in both quantitative data and the qualitative. The quantitative will, will help us point to where the issues are occurring. And the qualitative or the comments will help you understand um the context or the meaning behind those numbers. Okay.
And just so you know, guys, the, the, all the questions, if you, you're, the questions can be whatever you need them to be. I mean, we've got a very large bank of questions, so you don't have to just create all your own questions. Unless you have a survey that you really like and you want us to just plunk it in your account, we can do that too. Um, but you wanted, we really would like you to have some rated questions. You can do multiple choice questions. And you can even have some open-ended questions where you can get even more comments.
Yes. So um there is sort of a structure and a flow of what will get you the highest participation and the best data. So that's why we um kind of start in this flow of environment management and all of that. We can talk about that at, at another time. But it is all configurable. You can use our base questions. You can add to them. You can delete them. You can revert them. You can add your own, as Laura says. Um, and then down here at the bottom would be where you have any open-ended questions. And those are big open text boxes that they can write as much as they'd like to on those, um, as well as, sorry, I love, I skipped this part, the most important part, reason for leaving. Um, they've, uh, the, a pre- their primary reason for leaving would be a select box of choices, configurable, uh, select box of choices. And then there's a big spot for um additional comments on their reason for leaving. And that's where they do tend to write a lot. Um, sometimes, sometimes I'll be like a whole long paragraph in there and it, it feels like a lot to look at, but it is good information. And then your open-ended and your multiple choice questions would be down here, things like what did I like, what did you like best about working here? Um, what would you have changed or what would have helped you stay? Um, anything that you'd like to have in here. And we do have, as Laura mentioned, um some questions to kind of start you off of a base structure of questions. And then you can decide what you'd like to use based on our library. Down here at the bottom is a neat little feature, and especially I think in your world in education. Um, there's a, there's a spot here where you can add uh after the fact any comments, you as in HR um to add anything, if you've done any follow-up. So for example, let's say you read this exit interview and there was something maybe there about sexual harassment or something in there that you really felt that you needed to um investigate or were required by law to investigate. Um, if you wanted to keep your notes all in one place, we have this little link here at the bottom where you can hit, click here. And you can, um, it gives you a text box. You can add your notes and it will add it. It will append the document with your additional notes. This came up early on. One of our clients actually suggested this feature. They were used to using paper exit interviews and they would make notes on the paper exit interview after the fact. And they're like, how are we gonna do this? Do we need to print out each one? And we thought, oh, that's a great idea. We added this box initially with a little small box, but clients were really using this quite a bit. So we did make it into a, a good full-size, easy, easy to use box. But as Laura said, we do love to get the feedback and incorporate that into making things better for everybody.
And Beth's point, can you just go back to one, go back one screen to the, to the um the exit interviews?
Yeah.
I wanted to mention, Gladera, you and I had chatted about this yesterday about, you know, giving the employees the opportunity to meet with HR prior to leaving. So what a lot of our clients do is they actually have their employees fill out the exit interview first. We can put a question on your exit interview, asking the employee, do you want to meet with HR prior to your departure? And if they say yes, in this column, in this notes column that Beth has up on the screen, you can schedule, you'll get a notification letting you know that that employee wants to meet with you and you can schedule that meeting. And then you can put your, your notes in the HR comments box that we just showed you.
That's right. Yeah, that's sort of a built-in question. Would you like to meet or speak with an HR representative, something like that? And um it does send out that notification for you, which is nice. And it tracks them here. So you can see request meeting. And then if you do want to kind of mark down, if you've scheduled that meeting and track everything, you can track it right within, right within the system. Interestingly too, we found that um percentage-wise, like a lot of people are nervous thinking like, oh, do we really want to do this online? People want that face-to-face or they want that personal touch. And so we were really curious how this would play out. Uh, but in our statistics, it's something like um six percent choose to meet with HR and ninety-four percent choose not to. But there are certain populations that do often appreciate that. Um retirees, for example, often like to have that, that personal touch. So that's great to be able to um offer that to them. Okay, I know we've used up so much time and I hope you'll say just a bit more and I won't go over everything, but I would like to show you just a little bit on um some of this reporting because I, I think you'll find it interesting. And this is where really the value of the system comes into play. So I'd like to show you this tracking and stats with heat map report. Uh, I'm gonna move kind of fast because you know it's so late for you. Uh, but it starts us off with this um menu. This is really the heart of the system in terms of discovering where your issues are within the organization. So I'm gonna put this on detail, which means it's gonna run through all of the exit interview questions in this demo account. And I'm going to, uh, oops, I guess I leave that on all to date. And I'm gonna generate, hit this generate heat map. I'm gonna put this on compare by. Um, I'll go ahead and put this on by division. And you can think of this as by your different school districts or by whatever makes
Their bargaining units or whatever. Yeah, we can change. Yeah, it doesn't have to be division. We can name, name these whatever you need.
Okay, so I'm gonna hit my little go button. And what it's doing here is, I have my Zoom box. Let me move it up. Okay, um, so it puts all of the questions here on the left side. It has the average rating for your organization here in uh, in the shaded color. And that becomes sort of like an internal bet benchmark for you. That's the average person who is um leaving the company, how they're rating it. And then we asked it to compare by division. So each of the divisions are over here uh on the right and how people have rated it. So you can very clearly see um where the issues are. And I'm gonna pop into this heat map report because I just love this. This is one of our newer pieces. This heat map report will reorder it by top to bottom of your average of the questions that are receiving the highest rating to the lowest. And it color codes them such that then you can see within your different districts or um bargaining units. You'd be able to actually see that, okay, everybody thinks coworkers are great, except over here in this BOS district. Um, you know, they're, why are they lower? And they just kind of pop right out at you. Okay, so for your demographics, we go back to this menu. Um, you can, um, as part of your account, you're able to set up your account with um a whole variety of different demographics depending upon your subscription with us. And that would be the, the system comes with um your uh department, division, job class, exempt versus non-exempt. And again, as Laura said, you can name them whatever you'd like. And then you can add custom demographics, which could be things like length of service. Um, employees that have been there less than a year, uh, one to three years, three to five years, five to ten. Because the issues that uh are impacting long service employees might be really different from those that are impacting the new employees that you've just brought in and then they leave after their first year uh there. So we can see what, uh, exactly what's happening for each party. You can do based on performance rating. Uh, we have a diversity module that adds gender and race um to your demographics, plus has some other little special features designed to detect barriers for women and people. um, to your demographics, plus has some other little special features designed to detect barriers for women and people of color. Um, and can really break down this data, how, however you'd like to do that. Um, the last piece that I'll show you just in the name of time. Well, you'll see here, we have a variety of reports. We have a red flags report that gives you a running list of all of the employees. Um, any areas where they rated it a one, that lowest rating, and it orders them by how uh, how many times it received a rating of one. Uh, we have a kudos report, which is the opposite. So we can also see what you're doing. What are you doing great at? And you want to replicate that and pat people on the back and not just use this as a punitive uh, kind of item. We have, of course, the reason for leaving report, which gives us the selected reasons for leaving. And for all these reports that I'm showing you right now, there's something that this is comments. Any comments typed in. We have what's called a focus menu. So that let's say maybe one of you are focusing on a certain district that you know there's some turnover in. You think you know why it's happening, but you want that data behind it. You can run any of these reports by that particular district. This is a hospital, um, demo account. If I put this on Framingham Hospital, I can run this for just the people from Framingham Hospital. I could even say the nurses. So you could do this in your case, a particular district, you could say the teachers. And you would get all the red flags for the teachers. You can get all of the reasons for leaving for the teachers. And really, really drill, drill in there. And it just takes seconds to get to this data. Uh, the last one here too is the trends over time report. Maybe I shouldn't do this one because this, my demo account is, this that I'm using here is super old. And I don't know what year will work. I'll just sit real fast and see if it works or not. See if we get anything. So what this does is it actually tracks over time. Now, we're not going to be able to see and I don't want to wait. I don't want to waste your time pulling, getting the right date. But it's, it tracks for you of some graphs of um, exactly how things are going to let you can so that you can really see the progress and measure your progress. Are things getting better as you put in some new initiatives? As you try to attend to some of the issues that you're seeing, you'd be able to report on the improvements. And maybe show the school district or show the school committee or whatever the improvements that you've actually made. Um, and it just takes a couple of seconds to run that report. So again, there's a whole variety. There's the executive reports, there's executive summaries, quarterly summaries. Uh, on and on and on. I don't want to keep you here all night, so I'll stop. And I'd be glad to, I'm glad to stay. If you have any, if there's anything you want to see. Um, let's take some, any questions that you might have, or if there's something that you do want us to show, we'd be glad to do so.
Absolutely.
We come back to the front here.
I, I have the same question I always have. How much?
Oh, she gets it right to, get right.
I love that.
Right to the heart of it. Okay, it's a wonderful question actually. And um, we're into simplicity over here. Um, at Knob Scott. And so we do sort of a, um, uh, everything all-inclusive strategy here for your pricing to make it really easy for budgeting. And so, um, we do this based on a subscription basis. Your subscription would be a minimum of twelve months. Um, and a maximum starting of, um, thirty-six months, three years. So you can do any in between. The, um, so that would lock in your prices of, um, for whatever period of subscription you choose. And then the subscription would be all-inclusive. It would include unlimited exit interviews, unlimited reporting. It would, all your customer support, your account setup, um, your guidance, training, refresher training. Everything is included in that. And the pricing would be based on the size of your organization. So the number of employees. So we didn't want to get into too much detail in case you didn't like the system. Which we didn't think would happen, but
No.
But what we can do is I think we have, and maybe you can confirm that you would fall into our um, subscription range of one thousand to three thousand employees. Is that, can you confirm that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that correct? Okay, because what we can do is, um, after the need, after this meeting, we can go ahead and send over. We have Gladiara's information. Glider, can we send to you and you can pass along?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll send out. It'll show you what's included. It will show you your annual rate. Um, and, um, but it's not, we're not super expensive. Um, you know, we're, we're designed to make it easy for people to get into this technology. And really, we just want to help organizations stop their turnover. That's, that, that's where our passion lies.
Okay, fair enough. So it's total number of employees, not like roughly how many have left per year in the last five years?
Yeah, we kind of, it's, it's just easier. And you know, it all kind of works out in the wash. Some companies have higher turnover. And so they're using it more and some have lower turnover. They're using it less, you know, but ultimately it's just easy for people to budget and not having to count how many people were left and change it and this, and they have to go back for their budgeting. So yes, to answer your question, yes. It's simply based on the size of the organization. So you get one price. And then everything's included. No nickel diming. You know, making it, you know, along the way, or you have to ask for more budget. Um, you'll have everything available to you.
Okay, thank you.
How many school districts do you currently work with?
Um, schooling has actually not been, unfortunately, has not been one of our hot industries as we were hoping and assumed, um, because of, you know, we know that the, um, turnover in, um, education is so challenging. Um, however, the online nature of this when we first started was, um, challenging because people didn't have the internet access as they do today. So we can pull some data for you and take a look and see. And we can include that with the information that we send over. Um, I think we've probably worked more with, um, secondary education.
And colleges and, yeah.
Yes, yeah, trade schools, vocational schools and less um, uh, in, in your area. Though we'd love to. We actually did some interesting work in education with actually student exit, uh, uh, exit interviews of students at the end of the year, taking surveys and getting some feedback from the students, which was also a, a kind of an interesting side.
That was fun. Yep.
Side approach project.
What is a good participation rate?
Oh, great question.
Really good question. Yeah, um, the average, we, we're very data oriented, as you can imagine. The average of all the organizations using, um, our program runs at about sixty-five percent uh, participation. But the real answer depends on how well you utilize the system. So our companies that work with us, um, and sort of do as we suggest, um, are in the higher ranges, the seventy-five, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-five, eighty-nine percent participation rates. The ones that don't, and I'll give you an example of that, um, might be quite low in the, you know, forty-five percent fifty, uh, forty percent range. And what I mean by that is, um, one that comes to mind is, is an organization, they've been working with us for years. They're one of our first clients. I think they've been with us for maybe eighteen years still with us today. But their participation is terrible, that they don't seem to mind. Uh, but what they do is, um, at the end, when someone leaves, they send out in the postal mail a packet, right, with all of their termination information. Their benefit information, Cobra, all of that. And in that is a little piece of paper with here's how to take your exit interview. And we're like, no, don't do that. Don't do that. But you know, that's what they want to do. And they're, you know, I think their participation is maybe thirty-seven percent. And I mean, I guess it's better in the scheme of things that are just sending out paper exit interviews and they do get all the data, but it's not. It's, it's right, our numbers down.
But the other thing to think about too, to your question of, uh, participation rates is, um, you know, the data feed will help that. I mean, the clients that we have on the data feed, which really does ensure that all of your employees are enabled because sometimes manually they get missed, not going to lie. Um, but when you do use the data feed and in my conversation with Gladiara yesterday, I think you guys have a really good process because you can, you end date them in your payroll or whatever system you're using. Um, and that's going to, that's going to produce a lot of participation. And I think you, I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised at, uh, what your participation rates could be.
Yeah, well, let's, you know, we can talk about that for a second because it's really, a lot of it is about communication. Like, we can make sure with data feed, everybody gets enabled. But we still need to encourage them to complete it. And so depending upon, like, we don't know your culture. And if it's a suspicious culture, is it, uh, like they, they understand that you folks really care and that you're listening and you want this information? So, um, a lot of it too is sort of working towards that trust and building that trust with the employees. So that they see. And so how we communicate this, you, you know, a, a, as often as possible communicating that. And, and in the email invitation that goes out, we want to word that just right. For them to see that, you know, we care, we want your honest feedback. We don't use this to, to harm you. And we make change. So let's say, let's say you do make a change based on some of the feedback that you're getting. You want to say that when you make that change. This is what we're hearing from feedback from employees. We listen, we care, we're interested. And the more that that message goes out, the more that they trust you and know that this is, that you want their, their constructive critique. That you don't want them to just say, oh yeah, everything's great, I'm fine. That you want, you know, as, the more they understand that, the better your participation. But we've been doing this for a long time, so we've gotten quite good at all the tricks and tips and secrets for how to get good participation. So we would work with you and your team and whoever's, um, managing the program, Glidera or whomever. Um, on kind of asking you some questions about your environment, giving you our feedback. We have some communication documents that we can give you that you can share with people, that sort of thing.
Last question. So with all that being said, what are the top three to five best practices? Eh, a client of yours can do to ensure maximum participation?
Great question. I love this guy. Um, yes, so, um, there's two pieces. There's two pieces. Well, no, I just, I'm, I'm, I could, I could talk on this for an hour or so. Trying to think of how I can be concise.
Top three, Beth.
I know, Laura, Laura knows me too. So, um, so there's two parts of it, right? Okay, so the first is we want to get them to even open it. Right? If you, if you send it out. So we need to make sure that they, that they, um, that they feel like there's a reason to do that. So, um, in the email that gets sent out, the wording on your email is critical. And we'll help you with that. Um, there would be also the, um, you know, not everyone can do this, but I'm going to say it anyways because it's, you asked for the, I don't know if you can do this or not, but communicating beforehand um, is really important or can help your participation. So let's say you have a termination process where, you know, you go through all the little, you might have a checklist of all the things that you have to do in someone's terms. It's great if you can have in there something about, you know, taking your exit interview. And even though you're not doing it right at that second, you're communicating at that point. We're going to be sending you this, or maybe you receive this and communicating at that point. We even have companies that might communicate at the time of, in, I don't know if you do a new hire orientation or anything like that. But if you do, even letting them know that, you know, we're the kind of organization that we really listen to our employees' feedback. And just sort of like putting it out there that we get feedback through all these different ways. So really the number one is communication. Well, number one, two, and three are communication, communication and communication. Um, and doing that, of course, in the right way of, um, of how you're doing that. But so, uh, the second part of it is that once they open it and they look at the exit interview, we want them not just to open it, but to actually complete it, to get your full participation rate. And for that, it's making sure that your questions, they're not too personal, they're not too complex, they're not too confusing. They flow. We don't want to go like, like sometimes people will say, well, I don't care what they like best about working here. I just want to get right to what they didn't like. And we always say in the open-ended area, like, still ask them what they like best. People want to be able to tell you what they like, but they don't want, you can ignore it. You don't have to look at the results of it if you don't want to. But there's a flow, there's a rhythm to an exit interview. We want to start easy and kind of work their way into the heart, you know, the, the deeper issues. That's why we don't start immediately with your manager. How did you like your manager? You know, we start with the environment. Anyway, so flow, the question, all of that is also what will help you get, um, not just them to go into the exit interview, but to complete the exit interview. Okay. That's my, that's my top tips.
Oh, we can't hear you if you're talking.
I've put them all to sleep, Laura.
No, actually you, uh, uh, anticipated all the questions that I had, so.
Oh, good. Good, good.
Any feedback from you folks before we, before we close up? Can we get some feedback from you of just from what you saw, um, just general thoughts?
I do have a, a quick question. Why Knob Scott? Why, why, why your company?
Sure, um, Laura, you can, you can say your thoughts, but I'll tell you my thoughts on it is that, um, I guess a couple of things. The main thing being like, this is what we do, like exit, we're all HR professionals here. Uh, exit interviews, um, is our, our flagship product. This is what we do every single day. We've been doing it for twenty years. Um, we're not, like, you'll see a lot of companies pop up. They kind of make me crazy, to be honest, that are like Silicon Valley. You know, these young boys out of Stanford and they they think that they could, because they know technology, that they can plop something together. But, um, understanding HR. So I, 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 I think really that's our advantage, top advantage is that we blend together excellent technologists with, uh, HR understanding. And I guess the other thing is just sort of our passion for what we do and our flexibility. We're a small company. Um, we're very flexible. Um, we love new ideas. We incorporate what our clients ask for. Um, all of our employees have been with us for many, we're retaining our employees. Have all been with us like Laura has for years and, um, just they, just take such good care of our clients. We're easy to reach. We, we care about, we care about what we do. We love what we do.
Yeah, that. And I will also, I will also add that, you know, uh, WebEx, it was really born out of Beth working as an HR professional at a large bank. Um, and saw the need, you know, to really try and get a more data-driven approach so that they could actually figure out what the heck was going on. Um, so the passion has started twenty-three years ago and it's never stopped. And um, I think that we are the best at what we do. I think we are, you know, the gold standard. Um, if I can say that without sounding too cocky. I know it's hard, but I, I really do think we are the gold standard. I mean, we only showed you just a portion of the reports, but um, if you want demographics and you want to be able to slice and dice your data and really understand and see what's going on and have this team behind you so that we can help you and assist you and, and get you the best data and so that you can take action on it. You're, you're with the right group.
Yeah, and you know, too, really, I think, I, I think about what I look for in a vendor when we hire for different things. Um, and these things, it just seems harder and harder. And like for us, our team is just, I, I'm just going to put out there like honesty of, um, just honesty and integrity of people. Um, you know, we're just easy to work with. We try to, we try to have fun. We work hard and we play hard. We become friendly with our clients and, um, you know, we're just real people trying to do it, try to do a good, honest, honest job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just, uh, quickly, for feedback for you, just, uh, list some of the things that I find appealing about this. Um, is one, the efficiency afforded by it being online. Uh, the option for, uh, employees to be anonymous or to use their names. Uh, the fact that you have a large, uh, bank of questions that, uh, we could take a look at. Um, and, you know, put together what we think is a good survey for us. So all of those are things that, that are attractive about this.
Well, thank you so much for saying so.
Thank you for that feedback. Yeah, we would, we would love to help you, um, after our conversations with Glidera, Lauren, I both felt like this would be a good match. Um, that we could really help, um, make your process a little easier, uh, more efficient. And really get you some terrific data to help you with this, with the turnover.
I hope you guys enjoy, enjoy your evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Bye. We'll be in touch, Gladera.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody feel like we need to talk more about this right now or can we?
My only question, what kind of timeframe are we working with to make a decision?
I'm not sure. I, I would like to look at. A couple other.
Good, yeah.
Companies that are doing, you know, there's a, there's. A lot of people doing exit surveys right now.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, as we're integrating or making a, a digital process with our onboarding and hiring process. To make sure that, you know, integrating another. Outside company. Is, is it wise or can, are we, are we fully? Utilizing all of the platforms that we currently have. So just, just double checking on that. A timeframe.
I, I think probably realistically next year, September.
Couple of quick questions. How many people roughly do we have leaving each year?
Well, teachers roughly anywhere from, depending on the year, fifty to seventy teachers.
Okay.
And I would say, you know, I haven't looked at the statistics from, you know, percentage point, but I would. I'd probably say anywhere from six to eight percent. Of the other percent of everyone, yeah.
Okay, that's.
And so the, the teacher. Figure that you gave us, does that include retirees?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So in what's, what's our current percentage of response to our exit surveys? Do you even have that?
It's too.
Yeah, I think it's quite.
Small.
Well, there's room for improvement.
Yes.
Yes, I think the ease, you know, one of the things that I liked about Knob Scott is there. There's a flexi- flexibility and delivery of the, of the exit survey. A lot of our. Service employees, I think, would appreciate a text, like click on this and complete the questions. You know, that the, the efficiency of accessing the data. By department or that's very attractive and, you know, it's what we need. Like let's click and see. You know, in a five minute kind of timeframe. Who's leaving? Why? Yeah, and I just want to look, you know, I know that there are forms that our current platforms offer. But it's that, that tying all the data together to present it. And sometimes it takes us in the office, a lot of time to tie all of that. So the efficiency, you know, is. Big money saver and just, you know, reduces a lot of. Error in compiling data.
You know, if we can navigate. What's causing certain turnover, that's money saving in and of itself. So there's a benefit there.
So you let us know when they come back with a price?
Yes.
Cause now I'm really curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. More to come. Uh, next item on the agenda is the substitute nurse compensation. We received. And late request from Terry.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to.
Well, she sent along a, an explanatory memo too.
Right.
Quite a modest increase.
It's a modest increase.
Yeah, here, you know.
Saw that it's quite modest.
Yeah.
Perry's a consummate professional, knows her industry very well and knows the, the local industry very well. So. When she asked if she could do this and she's unable to be here tonight, but. Yeah, I just asked her to put it in writing and of course, it's, it's really well done. I, you know, would fully support it. I think it's needed and keeps us competitive.
Has she had any trouble getting subs?
Uh, yeah, they're, over the course of time, nurses are, they're hard to find.
I know that used to be true, right?
Yeah, it's still, it still is. The recent contract that we did with the employees association has helped. Uh, in our, in our regular nursing staffing needs, but subs are still hard to find.
I have five friends that recently retired from nursing and are. Working part-time and extremely happy with how lucrative it is. As a retired part-time nurse, doing anything from teaching to support work. Yeah, they're like, I wish I had done this.
That's, you know, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to remain competitive from the private hospital. Those folks are earning, you know, they're earning every penny they're worth, that's for sure. But it is, uh, the rates are really good, fresh out of nursing school. And depending on what you want to do, you're six figures.
Yeah. And, and they've incentivized it with, you know, tuition and different side bonuses.
I keep telling myself.
We keep it six figures, but.
Yeah.
We'll have to stay competitive. There's benefits, obviously, for nurses who want to work in school settings, including the schedule. I think that's probably the biggest selling point.
Yeah.
When they start to see the monetary amount they can earn in the private sector, it's hard.
Yeah. So what do we need to do?
I think just pass it to the full board.
Or, and it would be something that the full board would vote on.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I think there's consensus that we.
Yes.
We see it as reasonable and necessary, so. So can we put this on the board agenda for next week? Okay, um, and then we do need to do an exec session. To just look over tenure recommendations. It shouldn't be terribly long. Is there anything else?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, I was asking a question. So did you say no to my question or?
Oh, I was asking if there's anything.
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Talk amongst yourselves. Do you want to share with the class?
You got it, where?
Okay, so could we get a motion for exam session?
To enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing, discussing collective negotiations as to articles fourteen.
No, no, we're.
That's I. It's like. No. I moved that we entered to exact session, like.
To talk about.
Talked about.
To review tenure recommendations.
Do tenure recommendations.
Yeah.
Second.
All right.
Okay. Which would be the employment history of particular individuals.
It's. Thank you.
Yes.
It got drilled into my head.
But no, we've been told that.
Yeah.
That's inappropriate for us to just. Read that, right? That, that is, we are supposed to be much more specific about why. Into this session. To comply with the open meetings.
So I think we converted our business and I moved to adjourn. And I think you guys agree with me. No, Chris wants to.